Welcome to the December 10th School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. And I want you to know that the committee will be going into executive session and then returning to a regular session later on. Okay? So, Dr. Leclerc.
Good evening, everyone. If we could please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The swearing-in ceremony for officials will be Thursday, January 2nd, 2020, at noon time up here in the school department. The school committee will be meeting for their first organizational meeting at the conclusion of the swearing-in ceremony, which will be approximately 12:45. The next regular meetings are scheduled for January 14th and 28th, 2020. There is no school beginning December 23rd through Wednesday, January 1st due to winter break. School will reopen on Thursday, January 2nd, and there is no school again Monday, January 20th due to Martin Luther King holiday, and there is no school on Monday, January 27th due to professional development and the semester change. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do we have correspondence?
We do. We have a couple pieces of correspondence. The first comes from the St. Patrick's Committee of Holyoke inviting the school committee to participate in the 69th Annual Parade on Sunday, March 22nd of the upcoming year. And if we are interested in participating, we need to fill out the paperwork and send it in by January 18th.
Can I just add that the high school band has been invited to march this year?
Oh, great. Wonderful.
If that sways you too much.
That actually is an incentive.
When is -- should we talk about that now, or?
Sure. Sunday, March 22nd.
I mean, I intend to march.
I intend to as well.
I will as well.
Awesome. We had a nice turnout the last few years.
Jonathan, you're gonna be there?
Excellent.
It's always real easy to say it four months ahead of time.
Yes, it is, when we're sitting warm too, because it's very cold.
How many folks, just for the record, are going to march at the parade? Hands are always helpful.
Any other discussion? Okay, and we also received a letter from the high schools Gender and Sexuality Alliance. And so, I will read the majority of this letter. It's a really nice letter, a bit long, so I'll just read the highlights here. Dear Ms. Cynthia Kozinski, we are pleased to know that the East Hampton Public School System is supportive of LGBTQ+ students as seen in the fast response to our requests in 2017 for the gender-neutral bathrooms on the second floor at East Hampton High School to be unlocked. It has been comforting for gender nonconforming students to know that they have a bathroom available without having to go through the embarrassing process of obtaining a key. We want similar opportunities for students in the new school that is in the process of being built. Beyond gender-neutral bathrooms, the GSA at East Hampton High requests that there also be gender-neutral locker rooms available for any student to access. There are increasing numbers of students who are comfortable coming out at a younger age, so introducing these spaces at a middle school level is crucial. And they go on to provide really excellent explanation for why this is so important and some of the background knowledge and statistics that really support these kinds of facilities. So, they are proposing at least one unlocked gender-neutral restroom on every floor, simply labeled Bathroom, and an unlocked gender-neutral locker room or changing area that's easily accessible for all students. And so, in just a brief response to the GSA, and I think it would be great if we could reach out directly to them and to let them know that the plans are really already in place, but that certainly we have -- the building committee has been very sensitive to this issue and that there are indeed gender-neutral bathrooms and gender-neutral changing areas available. And I know the superintendent is happy to meet directly with the GSA group to discuss the specifics of what that will look like and ways that we can be sure we're really accommodating.
Great. Do we have gifts?
No gifts.
Okay. So, now we have come to our public speak portion. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, we're gonna move on. So, can we have our student representative update?
Okay. So, at the high school, winter sports just began last week after all the snow was plowed out. We have swim, boys' and girls' basketball, cheerleading, and hockey right now. And there's going to be a really big basketball game this Friday at UMass at The Cage at 7:45 versus Hampshire Regional. Today was Community Day at East Hampton, so there were no classes, and we had a bunch of guest speakers from around the New England area who gave large lectures and TED Talks in the auditorium. And then, students also met in their advisories with smaller groups of people and worked on activities. And it was organized by the Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator, Asher Hamilton. Okay, what else? The GSA is having a conference at the high school tomorrow with other local GSAs from around the area. I believe there are going to be about 50 to 60 students from other high schools participating. On Tuesday, November 26th, over 30 juniors and seniors were inducted into the National Honors Society at East Hampton.
Very nice.
The Quarter One Honor Roll students were announced last week, and there were over 100 first honor students and over 150 second honor students throughout all four grade levels. There's going to be a Winter Talent Show Friday, January 10th at 7:00 PM, going to be sponsored by the Drama Club. And it has recently been confirmed that this year's musical is going to be Mamma Mia. So, and auditions are supposed to be at the end of January, and the performances will be in early May. And also, there's going to be a band concert at 7:00 on Thursday with the East Hampton High School Concert Band, Chorus, and then the Elf Jazz Band, which is Middle and High School.
Excellent. Lots of good stuff going on. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm gonna ask everybody to be really patient.
No, I want to switch this around. Is that not okay?
Ah, no. I think we'll just be very quick. Okay. So, we are updating our policy handbook, and we have many to delete and add. So, Marissa's going to very quickly go through each item. We'll get a second. Jonathan, hope you'll be really quick. I mean, you guys usually compete. So, Shannon, let's see how fast we can do this, and then we'll vote on each one, okay?
I do feel like --
And just bear with us.
I know. I do feel like I want to say for the benefit of all the students who are here today that this is the most boring, mundane bureaucratic element of policymaking.
It's good to see it in action.
From local government, but --
But we do have to clean up our handbook. And that's really what we're doing.
We have this big paper handbook from the 80s, and so, we're in this transition over to the digital realm, getting rid of all those policies. So, I promise you, the real work of school committee is much more meaningful than what you're about to witness.
(laughing) Okay.
So, okay, all right. So, first, I would make a motion to accept the minutes from our 10:29 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for the first -- to accept the first reading to delete KOD Gifts from the Public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
KCD Public Gifts to the School, first reading to add.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
DO Scholarship and Award Funds, first reading to add.
Second.
All those in favor?
JM Acceptable Use, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
JCBD1 Bereavement, first reading to delete.
GCBD1.
Ah, thank you. GCBD1 Bereavement, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
GCBD Professional Staff Leaves and Absences, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
A little too fast.
GBCA Staff Conflict of Interest, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
GBCB Staff Conduct, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
GBEV Staff Conduct, first reading add.
Second.
All those in favor?
GVEA Staff Protection, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
GVEA Staff Ethics Conflict of Interest, first reading add.
Second.
All those in favor?
JL Student Gifts and Solicitations, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
KI/KJ Public Solicitations in the School/Advertising in Schools, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
KH-A Public Solicitations in the School, first reading add.
Second.
All those in favor?
KH-A Contribution to the Funding of Interscholastic Athletics, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
KHB Advertising in the School, first readings add.
Second.
All those in favor?
DG Student Activity Agency Account, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
DG/DH Depository Funds, Bonded Employees and Officers, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
DGA Student Activity Accounts Prepayment, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
KNAJ Relations with Police Authorities, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
KLG Law Enforcement Involvement, first reading add.
Second.
All those in favor?
GCN Evaluation of Professional Staff, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
AFC Evaluation of Professional Staff, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
GCO Evaluation of Professional Staff, first reading add.
Second.
All those in favor?
GCBA Professional Staff Salary Schedules, first reading delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
Replacing it with GCBA Professional Staff Salary Schedules, first reading adds.
Second.
All those in favor?
FF Naming of Facilities, first reading to delete the old.
Second.
All those in favor?
FF Naming New Facilities, first reading to add the new.
Second.
All those in favor?
GBCBA/GBK Substance Abuse, Drugs and Alcohol, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
GBEE Staff Health and Safety, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
GBER, GBEAR Staff Health and Safety, Safety, Staff Protection, I can't read, first reading to delete.
Second.
You're doing a great job. All those in favor?
GBEA Staff Protection, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
GCF1 Highly Qualified Staff, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
GDF1 Highly Qualified Staff, first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
So, the Policy Subcommittee does actually review all of these. We talk about it, and then we bring it here and we rapidly vote for it. So, that's what you just had to vote for.
Can I just add something really quick?
Please, yeah.
So, a lot of these, as you can see, we're getting rid of the old ones and putting in new ones. The KLG, that was approved by the Attorney General's Office.
Law enforcement.
That's the law enforcement involvement. And then, most of the ones at the end were procedures that were just taken out of the book, because they don't really work.
Great. Thank you. Great. Okay, does anybody have anything under other?
I'm gonna squeeze something in real quick, just because there's no collaborative update, and I just want to make sure everybody is aware that not too far around the corner, we have the Transforming Education for Social Justice Conference coming up. It's scheduled for Saturday, March 14th. I believe this is their fourth one. You'll recall when I was in East Hampton, we had a lot of students who participated in leading some of the presentations. They are once again trying to make the youth focal point of the whole day. So, they are currently accepting proposals for presentations. If there's anybody out there who's interested in maybe doing such a thing, proposals need to be in by January 3rd. Registration is now currently open, though, and I would definitely recommend anybody that's interested in attending that you sign up sooner rather than later, because they definitely do always fill up. And there'll be four tracks to follow this time. One of them will be all youth-led programming. They'll have early childhood, elementary education, secondary education. And cost is $35. I believe there's a waiver for that for students. So, there's a slightly different way to register. If you are a student, I'd be happy to help, or I'm sure there are other people who could do that as well. And where's it located this year? It's at UMass. UMass, yes. Thank you. I meant to mention that.
Thank you. And thank you for talking. If I may ask, I had mentioned to Allison, I'd like to sign up for it. I know we kind of did it as a group last year.
We did.
With Sue. So, do you want us to just email you? Okay.
Sounds good. Okay. Anything else? Time for superintendent update.
Sure, thank you. So, in the way back of your packet, you have the school committee meeting schedule proposed for 2020. It goes January to December, if you recall. I believe that we ran that through to consider special holidays and things. But if anyone sees anything glaring that we should correct, please, if we missed an important --
Laurie's usually so good at alerting us to the Jewish holidays.
She knows. She looked at it.
She looked at it? Okay, very good.
Yes. So, I don't think we need a vote on that, do we? Is that just informational?
I think they have in the past.
We usually vote on that our first meeting in January.
Do you want them to vote on that in the organizational meeting?
You can now, if you want to organize on the matter, because you're all --
Oh, yeah, it's all the same people.
I move we approve the meeting schedule as presented.
Great.
I'll second.
A discussion. All those in favor?
And right now, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Pete to the podium. She's going to be bringing us on a tour of the Turnaround Plan at Center Peppin. And just as an announcement, Mrs. Pete will be leaving the district. She has a new job in Chicopee, and she's going to be leaving at the end of next week to start her new job after the Christmas break in Chicopee. So, we thank you for your service. We will miss you. And I know this has been a huge undertaking at Center Peppin. And I would point out, just because we've been, you know, as I review my evaluation with all of you, the Turnaround Plan, just as a reminder, is part of our overall district strategy for meeting the needs of all learners. So, it's aligned to our district improvement plan. And for my superintendent evaluation, it's aligned to goal number one, for those keeping score, for addressing the Turnaround Plan at Center Peppin. So, Mrs. Pete, and I think Ms. Levin is going to be up there with her, once she gets the light situated.
There you go.
Well, thank you, Dr. Leclerc, Mayor LaChapelle, and all of the school committee for having me here this evening. So, we have some information on the Turnaround Plan and our -- last year, we spent a lot of time, a group of staff, sorry, staff members from Center Peppin, spent a lot of time working with SSOS, which is a group from the states, Statewide Systems of Support. Some really wonderful people who came in to help us find the different areas that we were weaker in and that we needed to work on. And then, we took that information after a site visit and some different conversations with staff members, and we worked together to write a Turnaround Plan, about 45-page Turnaround Plan. This year is the year of implementation. So, I was just gonna walk you through some of that information, so that you are abreast of where we are at this point. So, the good news, when, if you want to look at the good news of being in turnaround, is that in 2018, 2019, we received assistance from school-wide systems of support, SSOS, as well as a planning grant of $25,000. And then, this year, as we are still in turnaround, we received an additional implementation grant in the amount of $30,000. And we continue to have support from the representatives from SSOS, both in our building and at central office, our district level. Additionally, Julie Ann Levin had applied for, and we received a grant for a STAR Early Literacy Screener, which really will work to give us a lot of great information on where our children are in their early literacy, so that we can focus on how to help them better. So, if you look up here, you'll see our accountability data. So, in 2018, and so, this information is just on Center, because although we run as one school, the state sees Center as one school and Peppin as another, and Center was the school that was in turnaround. So, you can see that in 2018, all students, our percentage was 35.9, and your target really is 50%. And this year, 2019, we went up to 43.5. And for our white population, it was 36.1% in 2018, with a target of 50% again, and we went to 44.5%. And that is in math. So, again, you're aiming for 50% and above, you know, that's where the state would like us to be, and 60% or above is considered high growth. So, we didn't quite meet that 50%, but we did make some gains. In ELA, you can see that in 2018, we're at 40.8% all students, and our subgroup of white children was 41.2%. Again, that goal being 50, and we didn't, we did not meet the mark. We were pretty far off. So, that low growth is why we are focusing on literacy this year. That's why Ms. Levin, Mrs. Levin went for the grant and received that, luckily received that grant towards the STAR Early Literacy Screener, which will be great in driving instruction. And then, this page, this graph is on chronic absenteeism. So, in 2017, this graph I did show Center and Peppin, 2017. You can see that we were really low, 4.6. But in 2018, which is when we were identified, our percentage of children that were chronically absent, meaning more than 18 days, 18 or more days, was 10.9%. Our target was 8.7, and we did reduce it all the way down to 3.6% of children being chronically absent. So, we made some serious gains there, which is great. And then, at Peppin, it was 7.3 in 2018. The goal we were looking for was 5.8. We did not make it there. We went up. And so, these are all, these are all things that we're looking carefully into and seeing what, you know, what is working, what's not working, why is one building different than the other, what can we do, what can we put in place to help to reduce that number of children that are chronically absent. So, we looked at certain, we created eight strategies during the turnaround, or when we wrote the Turnaround Plan. So, the first one is that the school will establish distributed leadership by creating procedures and teaming structures that work collectively and deliberately to impact student achievement. Teams will support the ongoing efforts to ensure high-quality instructional practices throughout both Center and Peppin. Although Center was the only school that was in turnaround, because we run as one school, two buildings, we wrote this plan with both buildings in mind. So, here are some of the things we are implementing, that we're closely working with central office administration and SSOS representatives. We created, last year, we had the TAP team, the Turnaround Plan Team, that consisted of administration, various teachers, general ed, special ed teachers, and members of SSOS, that this year evolved into our BUILT team, our Building Instructional Leadership Team. Not all of the same members are on it. We lost a few, because it's a very big commitment, and then we gained some others. So, we have the BUILT team this year, we have our DATA team, our SEL, Social Emotional Learning Team, and our Student Consult team. So, those are some of the leadership groups we put together. Strategies two and three go hand in hand. Strategy two was create a shared definition of high-quality instructional practices across all content areas. And school leaders and teachers will create a shared definition of high-quality instructional practices and monitor implementation through teacher-led learning walks, which is strategy three. So, again, to implement this, we have continuous bimonthly training and meetings with our BUILT team and SSOS. We have graciously been given more time with our instructional coach, Jody Alatalo, and she is assisting teachers in using that high-quality instruction. We created, as a BUILT team, look fours, and when they're on their learning walks, they will have specific things that they are looking for to identify if high-quality instruction is taking place in those classrooms. And the implementation of those learning walks will begin in January. We were supposed to have one this month, but due to the snow, we got snowed out. So, we had to push it through. We felt that to really get the best, the best bang for our buck and really see what's going on in the classroom, we didn't think it was fair to the teachers to do it right before the holidays. So, we are putting it off until January. Strategy four was math instruction. And so, this year, we have implemented a new math curriculum called Investigations in Grades K to 2. And also, observations of surrounding districts using Investigations has taken place. So, today, we sent, how many? Do you remember? Six, maybe?
Six, seven, yeah.
Six K-1 teachers that went over to a school in North Hampton, who has been using Investigations with Fidelity, and they were able to observe. And we know that as teachers, as educators ourselves, we don't always get the chance to go into other people's classrooms and see what's going on there and all of the great things that are happening. So, this was a really great, a great opportunity that Mrs. Alatalo set up for our teachers to be able to go and observe in some of the classes. Do you remember the name of the school, Mrs. Kozinski? Please. Thank you. And strategy five is literacy instruction. And if you remember from the slides that I showed you, we were falling short in literacy instruction. So, Grades K to 2 will be using data from that Early Literacy Screener that I spoke about, the STAR Screener. And Grades 3 to 4 will align and support guided reading instruction. So, we implemented the STAR Early Literacy Screener. It was supposed to be K to 2, that was what the grant money was for, but we, the district also paid for third grade to be screened. So, we had an additional grade, which is wonderful. So, what that, what that takes, or how that takes place, I should say, is that children all had to test on a computer, on technology. And the test is really, we explained it to them, is it's made for them. So, they ask a question. If the child gets the answer correct, the next question is a little more difficult. If the child gets the question incorrect, it brings it down a bit. So, it really gets, gives us some great information on where the children are, what gaps they have in their learning, what they're ready to learn next. We also have guided reading instruction and a book study going on with our Grade 3 and 4 teachers, and that is taking place with Jody Alatalo, our instructional coach in the district. And also, she is always available. She's wonderful about going into classrooms, supporting teachers, and modeling instruction if she's asked to, which is wonderful. So, this is just some, they give you lots of different reports and data from this Early Literacy Screener. This is just one, and it's very hard for you to see, but what we did here is we compiled all of the results from Center and Peppin. And as of our first screener, excuse me, as of our first screener, 63% of our students are either at or above grade level. If you compare them to their peers nationwide. So, that's a good thing, and we're gonna continue working on improving literacy. Strategy six is on Tier 2 Instruction and Interventions. So, we wanted to align Tier 2 Literacy Interventions across the two buildings. And when we talked about this in turnaround, we talked about implementing the evidence-based intervention called LLI. And then, through discussion and feedback and the data that we received, we've decided that more information is needed in order to determine if that truly is the best intervention to train more teachers in. So, today, as a matter of fact, Mrs. Levin and Dr. Leclerc, were you there as well? No, just Mrs. Levin and SSOS?
I was with PE.
Okay, you were with PE. I forgot that. So, they were conducting some needs assessments and really determining and having good conversations about what Tier 2 interventions are currently in place. And -- good conversations about what Tier Two interventions are currently in place and how we could improve those moving forward. So again, lots of great conversation. And strategy number seven, we're almost done, I have one more after this, is using ongoing data analysis to decrease chronic absenteeism. And you've seen that we already made some gains, or reductions, I should say, at Center, and we want to see those also at Pepin. So some of the things that we've put into place are continual attendance, attendance data analysis through Student Consult Team, letters mailed home intermittently throughout the year, homeschool conferences, reminders to parents of being what we call an attendance hero, which is here every day, ready to learn and on time. And also, we've gotten two new signs for outside in the front of both buildings, reminding parents. So at drop-off, one side of the sign says, "Thank you for getting your child to school on time," and we have a attendant out there who opens the door, and they roll, the cars roll, we open, we let them out. After eight forty-five, that sign gets turned, and it says, "Oops, you're late, you have to come in, your child is late for school, you have to come sign your child in." So it's another visual reminder to parents, like, oh, school starts at eight forty-five, because, believe it or not, we had lots of parents who were like, "I'm not really sure exactly what time school starts." So, yeah, so it's a nice visual reminder. So I think that that's helped a little bit. And then strategy eight, last but not least, is create a clear and consistent behavioral expectations across both buildings, including student consequences. So there's been, again, continual meetings, training from SEL team, which Ms. McCollum has been a part of, and implementation of, there was training just yesterday at our PD, universal language, using the "if we see, we say." In other words, everyone's using the same thing. So if we see a child walking down, or, excuse me, running down the hallway, it doesn't matter whether it's my student or your student, we would all say, "Walking feet," something like that. So we're all using the same language, and children are getting to, to hear those, those same terms over and over, and when we hear them, they become, you know, more of something that we're used to. So also, common expectations within schools, use of zones of regulation and reflection areas, use of an incident report form so that parents are made aware if there are any behaviors with their child, and also use of reflection sheets. So to kind of sum it up, Center, Pepin, staff along with Central Office Administration and SSOS are continuing to work diligently to provide our children with the best instruction, high-quality instruction and education that we can give them. That's, pretty much, that sums up two years of time. You've been here and a half of the time. So thank you for, for having me. Is there any questions at all?
I have a question. Thank you for the report. Looking back to the very beginning where we were looking at some of the data in terms of math and ELA growth, and sort of learning how we think about these statistics, it seemed a little unusual to see the full student population and then see the white student population pulled out, since typically we're looking to see, are we targeting the specific sub-populations that face structural systemic challenges?
Absolutely. I think the only reason why we did that, Marissa, was that it was the largest population, and that's, I think, why we looked at it, too.
It's the only subgroup that we do, so in order to have a reportable subgroup in the DUCI Analytics, you have to have twenty or more students. We don't have a single group of anything other than white students at twenty or more.
And we didn't get that.
And that year that we first got placed into turnaround, it was our white subgroup that was our low-performing population. Of course, that's most of our students, and so it was, it really became clear that it was about more like what we call Tier One, so the quality instructions happening in the classroom. So that's, that's the usefulness of that data, but yeah, the truth is, it's our only subgroup.
Yeah, and additionally, that year, we didn't, we only had one fourth grade
Right.
At Pepin.
So we didn't get any data on Pepin.
Correct.
Okay, got it, that makes sense.
So if you look at the, if you're looking at the white student subgroup and then compare it to all students, then you can see where the students.
Right, well, I was noticing that in ELA at least, the white student subgroup is not, did not grow at the same rate, actually grew at a shorter, slower rate than the full student population.
And we did really look at each as best we could with the information we had, we looked at all of.
It is interesting, though, it's not what you would expect to see. And so we were, we were fascinated by it as well.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you very much. And Marissa, I'm going to turn it over to you. We're going to do the next introduction. And I think they need a second to get their, switch their presentation.
Oh, sure. So up next, we are delighted to welcome a very passionate East Hampton parent, Paula Garcia, and the East Hampton Climate Action Group. They reached out to us with an interest in talking to the school committee about ways that we can implement curriculum and practices in the district to be more sustainable in addressing climate change crisis. Whenever you're ready, if you'd like to come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for letting us come here tonight. My name is Shelley Greenstein. I am a resident here of East Hampton, parent of older kids, and former teacher, and I am part of a group called East Hampton Climate Action, and we are, we're tackling this in all, you know, in all different ways that we possibly can, and this is one of the ways we wanted to approach you about this tonight. This is Paula Garcia.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paula, and I have been a resident of East Hampton for the last seven years. I'm also a mom of three kids that go to East Hampton Public Schools, and I'm also a member of East Hampton Climate Action.
Hi, I'm Casey Corsello. I am a previous school committee member. I'm a parent of a middle schooler and an elementary school child, and I'm also a business owner, and my business is around sustainability. And I'm passionate about this because it does impact our children. So they're the ones that are going to have to deal with this, so that's why I'm involved. Thanks.
Hi there. I'm Judith Brier. I'm sixth grade ELA Social Studies at Whitebrook Middle School, and I'm also facilitator of the WE Social Justice Social Action Group at Whitebrook, and also at, I have kids coming back from East Hampton High School. And this group came to me to say, hey, this is what we want to do, and are you interested? And I'm sure you all know my answer would be yes, that I would say yes to that and go, let's do it, because I also know that a lot of our kids are interested in this, and it is about their future. And I think that you will find the proposal that we have here kind of interesting and captivating. I'd like for the kids to introduce themselves because they all chose to be here and are also wanting to be part of a committee, if there is one, in order to create change in our district.
I'm Javier Sims, and I'm a ninth grader at EHS. I am part of the WE Club at Whitebrook, and I feel like it is important to learn about climate change and to make sure people are aware about what is happening in the world.
I'm Dalton Slate. I don't like the idea of living in a world where I can't have a life where I can grow up and not worry about polluting the oceans or the air. I'm an eighth grader.
It's horrible. No, that's, it's good.
Hi, my name's Ria Patel, and I'm a middle schooler at Whitebrook Middle School, and I'm in eighth grade, and I think it's really important that we start noticing what's going on with our planet.
Hi, my name's Ava Stewart, and I'm an eighth grader at Whitebrook Middle School, and I think that we should start recognizing what's happening to our planet more seriously.
My name's McKenna Slate, I'm an eighth grader at Whitebrook Middle School. I think that we should have a climate, like, committee because the world is going to start showing signs of deterioration, and there's not going to be anything we can, we can do about it before it happens.
My name is Giuseppe Danucci Sims, and I'm an eighth grader at Whitebrook Middle School, and I think learning about climate change would be ideal for kids our age because we're going to have to live through it.
Hi, my name's Dakota Flink, I'm also an eighth grader at Whitebrook, and I think it's important for us to learn ways to like, like, help the world and stuff, instead of having it just slowly, like, fall into a horrible polluted places.
Hi, I'm Quinn Stoddard, I'm an eighth grader at Whitebrook, and I'd just like to say that as a young person here with other young people, this is very important to us, and I think that we need to be part of the solution and that our district should work on this immediately.
How do we make this slide go to the next? Up button, or this? Sorry. Just the mouse should do it. There it is. So just hit that. So climate crisis is a crisis that's happening right now, and we're all aware of this crisis, and it has a direct impact on our children and our children's children and their futures.
You can actually do this play, watch, you can say. Yep. Play.
How about that one?
There you go.
Oh, that's not right.
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, so why are we here? How did we end up here? So back on the twenty-fourth of September, East Hampton Climate Action organized a candidate's forum for climate and environment, and each of the candidates were given questions ahead of time of how they were going to address different environmental issues. They had time to prepare, quickly answer, and see how they were going to deal with this and what they were ready to commit. Amongst all the answers, one that was very common was investing in education. They said about implementing green standards and introducing climate change into the curriculum. So that's why we're here. This gave us the courage to approach the school committee, and that's why we came here. Why do we think education is the answer? Well, oh, shoot, the other one, sorry.
Why don't you switch? I'll do this.
Sorry. Oh, no. No. Anyway, I'll continue because I know that time is an issue, but, so why? What's the rationale behind it? We think that education, research shows that when kids get invested in something, their families, the communities, the neighborhoods follow, and they also get invested. And we have an example of this because last year, Maple School Kids got, decided to do a anti-idling campaign, and the idea was that they were the agents of change, and it was a total success. Idling has practically stopped, and we've, we've seen it, and up to this day, a lot of parents come up to us and say, "Our kid makes us turn off the key even at traffic lights." So it really worked, and, yeah, it's, the other reason is because we really want to empower the kids. The idea is to empower them. We think education equals knowledge, knowledge equals power, and that's how to change. In a world that's placing so much emotional burden on them, we want to enable our kids to explore and empower themselves to make a change in an increasingly challenging world. The news of climate, gun violence, drills, all have trauma impacts for sure, and the underlying despair is not being addressed. So how do we think, how are we going to empower these kids? So the first, I don't know where the slide is. No, local resources is one, if we get to that slide, sorry.
Can we go back maybe?
The other one, back one. Local resources would be one. Hitchcock and Arcadia, which is right here in East Hampton, have been organizing for a few years a youth climate summit in which different schools take part, and what they do is they teach kids and they give them the tools to empower them to make changes in their schools when they go back to the school. And also in Arcadia, Brittany Goodemus, I don't know how you pronounce that, has a curriculum that she has successfully been teaching and implementing in a lot of schools with a lot of help and grants, and which she would like also to implement in East Hampton schools. So those are the local resources, but the other way that we want to empower them is through the curriculum, through, and that's a model of one that we really liked, and Shelley sent each of the school committee members a page with links and articles of different examples of curriculums that have been used and implemented in different schools throughout the world and that have been a success.
This is a particularly good program. It's, it's really like a complete program. This is a four-minute trailer, so I, you know, when you have a moment, if you wanted to look at this. And it's, it comes at climate change from all, you know, from, from the angle of social justice. It really covers the gamut as far as, you know, having kids, empower kids to learn about their world and how are they going to live in this new future. So what we're looking for, what are main, we're asking for a few different things. We're asking for, to implement a climate-positive curriculum, to make our schools greener. So curriculum is tough. I mean, the curriculums are set, we, you know, we understand that. We're saying, we've got to squeeze this in somehow, this is so important, we have to squeeze it in. And green infrastructure in all school buildings, let's skip down to that. We are in a particularly great moment where we can make some really great changes with the new school coming. We want to, you know, create new habits, green habits across the board, and we need to be a model of that. Yeah, you want to talk about?
Yeah, I do. So what we're really asking for is implementing this climate-based in the curriculum, but also the, the curriculum is backing up our actions. So we're asking really to develop, would be to model and have the schools model sustainable practices. We're looking, talking about a comprehensive recycling program that, in all the buildings, composting and food waste recovery, something that's really, I mean, that's easy to do, and reaching out to the local farms and businesses where we can really give the waste to them, using it in the garden, really taking full access and advantage of that, the garden program that currently is at, I know at Maple School, I, I don't know what's happening at Pepin, just because I don't know. I know where, if we could really use that garden and really use it well, even in the summer, have people take care of it in the summer. At Whitebrook, it's not taken care of in the summer. There's food to be had, there's food to be given away to people in this community who need, who could use food and are lacking those resources. If we can eliminate the sale of all single-use plastics in all buildings, and I'm assuming like with the high school, that what happened was is that they have the water filling stations. So these are just some of the ideas. And also having recyclable, either having a dishwasher that actually cleans dishes and everything in the silverware in the, in the cafeterias, but really implementing recyclable dishes, silverware, and other implements, and not having straws in our schools. And then the curriculum that we're asking for actually is the why, right? Is the why of that happening? Why?
We're doing all these, implementing, wanting to implement all these things, but it's so important for the kids to understand why it's happening, and through science as well as social studies programs, we might, might be an avenue to implement a curriculum that really models sustainable practices, and explains why these are important for our environment.
Okay, so, just a few other things. What we consider green habits, the anti-idling campaign that we started at Maple, today we presented at the middle school to the fifth graders, and they seem pretty gung-ho on taking up the anti-idling campaign. A current walking and biking to school, we're lucky we have a bike path, but, you know, really make use of it. And the school menu could certainly use some help, especially with plant-based food options, which, you know, we definitely need to give kids some choices. So all of this adds up to really asking for a green committee, made up of a school committee member, a building rep from each school, children from each school, parents, community members, you know, a group working on this, and working along with the curriculum coordinator.
So what we'd like to do is, we wanna have this, this group of people coming together, and, and establish regular meetings with Julian Levin, the curriculum director, who would be very important to have, to have meetings with, but thinking about the logical next steps, where we go next, and, and then doing all the background work that's necessary in order to pull something like this off in our district.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we're not professional PowerPoint people, so there's back and forth, but the passion is here, and I think that we can all agree that the top, the clock's ticking, and so really, the ask of a committee is not to say, we should be doing this, but it's like, what can we do? What are the resources? There are so many resources out there, and then, how does the curriculum tie in? How would a curric, climate curriculum tie into the things that, so would meet standards, which it would, right? It could be, meet science and math and, like, ELA, sorry, social, everything. And, so, so the ask is, what can we do about this? Like, using the same kind of, I guess, alarm, in a way, right? So how can we move forward? How can we empower the children so that they can be part of the solution, because they're the ones to be, right? We're preparing them for college or for life, but then, what are we preparing them to live in? So let's just have that be part of it as well, so.
And so, and so what we would like is to have a liaison person, somebody who could actually make a commitment to respond and to let us know what you think about it, and so that we know, because this is really something that's actually about most important to every single one of us here, and not just these kids, but it's actually future generations. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would jump in and just say, at least, for now, I would be glad to be that liaison person in the early stages and, and get some conversations started.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the kids, because I know it's hard to get up in front of a microphone. They did a really nice job.
And have all of us stare at you.
Thank you so much.
If I could just add something in here, too. I think that one of the things that's important, like, you guys have mentioned these different pieces, like the anti-idling thing happening at the, at Maple School, there's a lot of stuff that's already happening, so I think one of the things that also is really important about having this type of committee, or type of sort of momentum, is pulls all those strings together.
That's right.
And brings it out in more obvious ways, so the whole community can know it's already happening. So these aren't small, little, individual things, they're actually a combined thing. So I look forward to working with everybody on that as well.
That'd be great. And also to see where the, where the gaps are.
Yep.
You know, where we can pull things together, what's happening here and there, getting ideas. Yeah, thank you so much for volunteering to be part of this. I have one more question. You asked for a school committee member to be a part of an ongoing meeting. When do you envision these meetings to be happening? Well, that's what we wanna talk about. We first wanna get someone who's committed and will, or on the committee, and I believe Marissa and Marin already said that they were willing, and then what the next step will be is, you can contact me, and I'll give you their emails, 'cause you already know me, and, and I can give everybody the emails, and we can actually get together with the kids, 'cause every one of these kids are kids who have already committed to being part of the committee, if it was, if we were able to happen, and then we can actually create those next steps and make a decision. And I don't, and we'll even, we'll CC you on the email, so that you're part of the loop also, so that you can add your piece when you wanna meet with us, and we can send you notes.
Mrs. Brier, I think, Sophia, you wanna tell?
I just wanted to say that, like, I think this is definitely something that a lot of high schoolers would be interested in, because I know at our student council, there's been a lot of talk of, like, starting like a subcommittee in student council for, like, climate change, but it hasn't yet happened yet, but I think that would be really interesting, especially like the anti-idling, 'cause I'm thinking of like the student parking lot, and every morning, like, 7:30 in the morning, it's just, everyone's cars are on.
We'll get to you.
Sophia, you wanna?
Yeah. Sophia, do you wanna be, come to the first meeting and maybe bring some of the people you know at the high school, and so we can, and even the teacher that might be the person, the liaison from the high school, and join us?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we can, and we can go from there and just create plans.
Definitely.
All right, I'll put you in.
I guess what I was trying to envision is, when I asked about when the, the meetings would occur, is, is your vision that they're gonna happen in the late afternoon or early evening? Because I'm wondering how much involvement we can get with even the community members, people to just come and sit in on a meeting. You know, a lot of these things happen at school and right after school, which makes it difficult, so I was just wondering, you know.
That's great. Thank you for that, because that's something that we have.
You know, early evening, late afternoon is a much better time.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that. That's really great feedback, and really helpful for us. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, so just a point of organization, I feel like there's definitely a lot of interest here in the committee in supporting what you folks are trying to do, and we have an organizational meeting coming up where we're gonna be talking about sort of assignments that we're all gonna have, and I feel like is, would it be possible to have this be a part of that discussion where?
I think so.
We can figure out who's the right person for it.
Correct. It's not a school committee committee.
So should we wait until you contact us?
Yeah.
After that meeting, you'll contact us then, and just say this is the, or?
I think you guys, I think it sounds like you guys are already moving in a direction. I think we'll also have a decent, we'll pull it all together, so.
We'll be going with each other.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Excellent job, everybody.
I was thinking of like my, like my collaborative assignment, but I still got that at that organization.
Just an update.
Yeah, I don't know, we act as, I don't know if, if like we can create things, I don't know if there's like a list of.
Johnny's question is, can there be like a climate?
She can't hear with the.
Can we create a new committee that would be within the school committee?
A climate subcommittee.
It's the same way we have health and safety, we've got illness. We could have for a task force.
Yeah, for a task force, of course.
Yeah, I just didn't know if they could do that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're not done yet.
All right, matters for action. Okay.
Okay.
Are we ready? I moved to approve the school payroll dated November 21, 2019, in the amount of $530,368.38.
Second.
All those in favor?
I moved to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November 21, 2019, in the amount of $716,310.22.
Second.
All those in favor?
I moved to approve the school payroll dated December 5, 2019, in the amount of
Second.
All those in favor?
I moved to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated December 5, 2019, in the amount of $188,710.25.
Second.
All those in favor?
I would move to accept the minutes from our November 12 meeting, and that's both regular and executive session. We're holding the executive?
No, just break it.
Okay, so I will move to approve the minutes from our regular session, we'll hold the executive until that matters resolve.
Shannon?
I second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
And then we have a budget transfer. Is there someone who would, an explanation?
This wasn't brought to us, so.
I think this is from, I think this is from a while ago, and I think it was just a matter of cleaning up.
Oh, it's from the school committee meeting on October 22nd?
Correct.
Okay.
It was just cleaning up. We had, we had money in the guidance counselor salary line, because we hired a new counselor, so we transferred that over to utilities, and then, and the nurse's salary, again, we had money because we had a nurse leave, and we didn't hire a new nurse for a couple of weeks, so that was transferred over to heating in anticipation of us going over in utilities and heating this winter.
So I would make a motion to accept the budget transfer.
Second. Are you gonna say something?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that's important to point out here, because of having just recently completed the Green Communities reporting for the city of East Hampton, luckily, we're moving in the right direction of having a new school, but the issue of having particularly Whitebrook Middle School as one of our buildings, the reason why this money has to be moved there is that the, Whitebrook is continuing to consume more and more, particularly gas, every year. It's doubled in the last two years alone, and so, I, I'm working right now to try to get some people together to look at that, and to look at how can we deal with that situation even before, as we're going into this heating system, heating season, because it's definitely a very big concern that our Whitebrook school continues to use and consume that much, and increasing that much. So hopefully, we're gonna be able to get together soon and be able to deal with it at that point, and at least sort of proactively look at what could be going on and why these bills are going up, but this is just gonna be able to deal with some of the tip of the iceberg, so. Thank you for sharing that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, so now can we have a roll call vote to go into executive session, and we will be returning at the end of executive session.
Baron Goldstein.
Cynthia Kuzensky, aye.
Frances Carrery.
Father Schmidt, aye.
All right, we will be back. So we are back, and we have finished our executive session around bargaining with the teachers' union, Unit A, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
We'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second it.
All those in favor?